I called order the meeting of the City of Columbiana City Council on this November 4th, 2025. We will ask Deanne to give the invocation and then Alexis Davis from the school representative will lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Lord, we thank you for the privilege to live in your presence and to work with you to build a better community. Give us the faith and courage to put our trust in you. In your name we pray. Amen.
States of America, in which the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Deanne, may I call the roll?
Kato?
Here.
Souter?
Here.
Dutilio?
Here.
Liston?
Here.
Graham?
Here.
Banner?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Willard?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
You all received a copy of the October 21st, 2025 Council Minutes. Are there any questions or comments regarding the minutes? There are none, they'll be accepted as submitted. At this time, it gives me great pleasure to get a chance to talk about how things get done in Columbiana, Ohio, and it's because of the people. And tonight, we're going to take a moment to recognize Russ and Diane Barnes for their generous donation that we're working our way through legally to receive for some property to build a building adjacent to the park that will be used to store our Christmas displays that we use for the joy of Christmas. There are many communities that wish they could have the great things that we have in Columbiana. And one of those great things is the joy of Christmas, and it's become a tradition in Columbiana, and it is a very important event. And tonight, we want to especially recognize the Barnes for their donation and indicate how much we all appreciate it. And when I say we all, I mean the council, the tourism bureau, and other people in the community. I think it'll be a great addition. And it will make us, it's really going to enable us to continue that great project. So we're real appreciative that the Barnes have come here tonight to accept our recognition of their donation. We're all very happy about that, and we appreciate you working with us in the community to make this happen. I would like to say that it's interesting, people are the ones that get things done. It's really about the people, and it's kind of interesting tonight, we're going to take advantage of the fact that we can recognize people that are involved now. We have a great tourism bureau that does many great things for our community. We're very lucky for, I don't know of another community of 7,000 people that have a working, living tourism bureau to expand and recognize the various events that take place in our community. And I feel very privileged because I'm one of the members of the tourism bureau, and I'd just like to say that Ty Graham is on the tourism bureau, and we have actually four tourism bureaus members back there, Nick Garfalo, Terry Schaefer, and Mike Clark, and our very own Bryce Minor is president of the tourism bureau. And you know, this committee that oversees the joy of Christmas that brings thousands of cars into Columbiana every year. These people work so hard, you do not know the amount of hours that they spend trying to put on, you know, to put on an event like we have in Columbiana. So I think this is a great opportunity tonight to recognize everyone that's been involved, and I want to say that. And at this time, I would like to ask, do either one of you want to make any statements? Come on up. Come on up, Dan.
Everyone, just want you to know that we're really happy to have this opportunity to give back to Firestone Park and the community of Columbiana, our lifelong home. Both have always lived in Columbiana. And we also believe the previous owners of our property, which were Lewin Virginia Way, and also their daughter Becky Way Nary, who acquired a state grant, I feel like I'm and raised matching private donations to purchase the 15-acre tract of land that now holds the walking trail, which is our lovely view, one of the lovely views of the park that we have. And that they also would be very pleased. So thank you for the opportunity for us to give back to you.
Thank you.
I love how you tied in the history of what other people have done to make the park so beautiful and our community so great. So thanks for sharing that with us, Diane. We would like to take this opportunity, since everyone's here tonight, to take a picture of these key people that are involved. We'd like to ask the Barnes to come and stand right in front of us here. I'd like to ask all the council members, push your chairs back. We're going to crunch in. The people from the tourism bureau, we want you folks to come forward. Come all the way back. There we go. Do you want to say something, Bryce? Yeah, you guys fill on my side. Okay.
Terry, you know it's too low.
I know.
Oh, see, I'm still too short. Let me try to do, yeah, maybe I can be through here. Okay, all right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
You practiced real hard on that.
It showed.
We will continue with our meeting, and we have Crystal Samita Boggs to discuss the Just the Jog 5K Race event to be held in the city. You can turn that around, they should have.
Good job.
All right, well, Just a Dog, it's our winter race that we do. We do multiple winter races, but this is our January winter race. It takes place at Columbiana High School and heads out towards Jerusalem Lutheran Church, same course that we've always been doing. Comes back the same way, and January 18th is the date that we're doing, and just asking for permission to have that race again. Do you have any questions on the application that I sent in?
Just real quick, were you, I thought it said you were going to do a food truck or thinking about doing a food truck? Did I hear that? Okay.
No, we serve donuts and stuff like that inside the school, so, yeah.
Okay, I couldn't remember if I saw that on that one, or was it just my imagination?
Hey, any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the event as submitted.
Second.
Motion second. Deanne, call the roll?
Kato?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Dutilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Very good, thank you.
Eric, get you guys all to walk so you can come and get whatever color-changing medals that we're going to do this year, so. Yes, I know you don't run, you can walk.
I guess I did fail to mention that copy of our building we have, which might be subject to change, I hear, but at least it gives us something to work at. And I would just like to make the comment, the challenge to the Joy Christmas Committee is going to be trying to get the building done in time for us to put the displays in after the joy of Christmas. So that's your challenge.
That's what I do with my Christmas lights.
There you go.
That'll be on the front page.
Okay. This time, we're going to move to the manager's report and turn it over to Lance.
Thanks, Mayor. Right, since the last meeting, we did open the bids on the Court and Herbster project. That's a stormwater project that's going to start relatively soon. The bids are being evaluated now, and we will have them ready for the next council meeting. And probably end up doing that one as an emergency, but the great news is that it came in significantly less, I think it was probably $150,000 less than the engineer's estimate, so that's really good. Well, let's see, we did meet with Pat Tingle to discuss her involvement in the future of the park. Let's see, going down the list, AMP, we are an AMP community. We have our own electric, and we have AMP there to help us. They've visited the city since the last meeting. The mayor and I attended the SOD Center 15th anniversary in Salem, and it was a really nice event. Basically closed the road down. They had a tent in the middle of the road, and Salem's got some exciting things going on. It was just, we were honored to be invited to that. We've been asked to consider some basically revisiting our food truck. It's been about eight years since we adopted our original food truck permitting procedures, and we've been asked to relook at those. So between Bryce and Mark and I, we could provide you a report, maybe some recommendations, unless you want to form a committee to do that. It's up to you. You guys can think about what, if you have any interest in being involved in that. Again, it's been seven years. We were one of the first ones in the area to adopt the food truck legislation. And we're, you know, we're going to probably tweak it just a little bit over the things that we've learned in the last, you know, seven, eight years. So you can let me know if you would want to form a committee. While we're on the topics of committee, the last meeting, we talked about the EMS and the concerns with that. Ty Graham asked that maybe we could get an EMS committee together, and we could bring the superintendents in together and, you know, talk about what we need to do and the current conditions, and maybe give a recommendation back to council. So if you'd be interested in doing that, we can talk about that at the end of my manager's report if you like.
I think that's an important committee.
Okay. We submitted an application for OPWC funding to the county for the Middle Street Sewer Line project. We appreciate the county and Omega for their help. And it was, it's a long, you know, process to get done, and I want to thank Bryce and Jesse and Howson Baird for helping us get that done. We did receive the keys for the Cochran properties last Thursday, so we're, you know, moving towards that process now. We're going to be meeting the engineer over the next week. We have not determined that date yet, but we will let you know when that is. And we want to thank Ted for, he successfully got us a set of old drawings from from an engineering firm that did a big project at the Flynn Building back in the 90s, and that'll help this project a lot. Knowing what we have and how things are built will really help. The auditors asked us that we adopt a grant policy, and Kevin and Mark are working on a new developing one. I think they've given us a boilerplate to do, but I'd like to consider that probably on November 18th. We'll be bringing that to you. On November 19th, we're going to be out at the school with Trish Misso's class, so that'll be good. The students will be presenting. Actually, it's a little bit of a surprise to us. We kind of gave them some ideas at the beginning of the year, and we don't really know which ones they chose, so if you're interested in that, 10:50 on the 19th. Jane of Rustic Birdcage reached out to us about a month ago, and she says, hey, you guys got to come down to my shop. We've got something in that you all need to see. It's for sale. And I'd like to direct your attention over to a portrait of, original portrait, portment, portrait of Harvey S. Firestone. So that, I think it says 1931 on there. It's a little difficult to do, but pretty sure, but it's original, and we thought it would look really good in the new city hall, so we went and picked it up. So we appreciate Jane looking out for us. Going through the different departments, electric department installed three-phase cable for the new storage units out there on 7th State Route 14 in Sponsella Road. Park and Cemetery, the columbarium were installed. Phase two of that project will take place in the spring with concrete walkways and landscaping. The niche sales will begin the first of the year, but the community members can reach out and get on a waiting list. Street Department, they did pick up brush and started leaf pickup. Okay, Dan. So over the course of this year, we've talked about different projects that we've been looking at doing, and this year, we were notified that one of our bridges in Columbiana qualified for the municipal bridge program through ODOT. So we got our team together, and Jesse and Bryce and Howson Baird worked on this presentation. It's just like 10 slides or so, but we're just going to focus on two, because if I tell most people that there's a bridge on West Southern, they'll say, there is? You know, so this is, this is just right outside where there's houses there, and there's a couple guardrails, so the next time you go down there, you can take a look. But so we submitted this to the municipal bridge program. It's about a $900,000 project, and we just received notification that we were awarded a grant to replace that, and that will be in fiscal year 2030, and we got $822,000, or actually $822,893 to redo this bridge that we can't really see. So let's move on to the next slide. There's what the bridge really looks like. So it's actually two culverts. The next one is going to be designed to be basically a rectangular box culvert. And as you can see, what's happening on the right side is that one's kind of filled up, and the one on the left, you know, Mother Nature pushes a bunch of water through and moves the silt around, and this is on either side of the bridge there. But we did get help with the, part of that $800,000 is for engineering, so we're really happy to get this. It's, we have five bridges in the city that we're basically responsible for, and this one is, you know, on the list. And we're also, this should bring us up to basically taking care of all our bridges that are, that we're responsible for in the city. So shouldn't have to worry about them for a couple generations, we think, so. And that all happened between the time we got to pack it and today's meeting, so kind of cool. And I believe that's everything I have, Mayor.
Lance, any questions for Lance?
We want to talk about the committees.
Yeah, I think that's a critical time right now for communities across the valley to address EMS-related issues. We saw over the weekend, WFMJ reported on Boardman, who's currently struggling with EMS issues as well. This is clearly a valley-wide issue, and it's something that I think council needs to get their eyes on, and forming a committee to explore different avenues for remedying these issues, I think is essential.
I'd be willing to circle that committee.
One?
I'd be willing as well.
I?
Same. We're skipped. How about skip?
No, go ahead. If you want to do it, that's fine. Okay, so in all importance with sunshine law, we must make sure that our committees only have thirty council members. And so that works out well, Bobby and Ty, and Amanda.
I'd be happy to be involved in the food truck conversation, whether it's a whole committee or just joining whatever conversations you're having.
Sure, can do that.
Anybody else want to be involved with the food truck discussion? Okay. Very good. A lot of people do not know that the food truck discussion, and I know Ted can speak to this, was one of the first ventures we really got involved with, starting with the planning commission way back, how many years ago?
I think it was 2017 that we really
2017. Because it was when I was in the position.
And that really initiated a lot of the economic development that happened in Columbiana, because we made policies and procedures that, you know, will help us, and it worked well with our other Birken Morder restaurants and other establishments, so we tried to make it so it was a fair level playground. So I think that'll be good for that committee to review that matter as well. Any other comments on either of those? Okay, very good. You received a copy of the bill list of November 4th, 2025. Are there any questions or comments regarding the bill list? Okay, at this time, we will move to whole business, and I'll entertain a motion to read all the ordinances by title only.
Don't move. Second.
Motion second. Deanne, you call the roll?
Souter?
Yes.
Dutilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Kato?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-O-3310, second reading. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with GPD Group for the purpose of providing engineering services for the 369 KV circuit breakers and associated line relay replacement project.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions on the motion? Deanne, you call the roll?
Dutilio?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Kato?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-O-3311, second reading. An ordinance accepting streets, curbs, and storm drains on Homestead Drive located in Firestone Farms, plot number four.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. Any questions or comments on the motion? Deanne, you call the roll?
Liston?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Kato?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Dutilio?
Yes.
I have on the agenda no new business at this time, so at this point in the agenda, like we always give an opportunity, for anyone from the public who wishes to speak, may do so now. Anyone want to make any statements, comments? Not you, Nate, you don't want to make it. Okay. All right. Well, now I will turn to the council. Any of the council members wish to make any comments tonight?
I'm just going to piggyback on the event that we had here. By the way, thank you as well for your generous contribution. That was great, and I think it'll be a huge asset. But I want to say, you know, I see on Facebook, I kind of monitor Facebook, much to my chagrin often, but how often people will say, you know, the city should do this event, or the city should do that event, and the only thing I can ever reply to that is you understand that the city doesn't actually put on events. We actually prefer to stay out of the way and let our civic groups, the tourism, the Chamber of Commerce, the American Legion, the Fire Department, and please forgive me anyone I'm missing, because I'm sure there are five or six others. But it's these groups and individuals that actually do most of the work in our city. We just, for want of a better phrase, we just stay out of the way. We let them do what they're going to do, make sure everything is safe and clean, and we just, I want to express how thankful we are. I try to do this a couple times a year anyway, but how thankful we are to all of these groups for everything that they do for the city, because without it, we would be a much, much less interesting place to live.
Great comment. Great comment. Any other comments?
Can I add something?
Sure.
So I would like to thank the Barnes, just because, I mean, I don't know if you've seen the trailers we used today, I know Catherine and Liston has, and they're quite the challenge with the displays we put on and stuff like that. So this is really my first year kind of working with the trailers and stuff, and it's interesting. I think the one we actually moved had a flat tire, so he kept on going. I'm not sure how we're going to get him out of the park when we need the building, but we may just have to burn him there. Yeah, I mean, I think this is sort of going to make a big difference for our part in the sense that it's going to be so much easier for us to sort of these things and have a place to work on them and things like that. So as a community for the joy of Christmas, we are very grateful for this, so we can't wait to get this out. And then as, just as part of our thank you to you, the very last night of the joy of Christmas is December 28th. The proceeds from that night will be a lock-in night. Those will be donated to your
Mike, thanks so much for making those comments. That was great. I'd just like to say that, kind of tying into what Dan said, and I'd just like to say that, kind of tying into what Diane said, and we had tourism meeting last night, and and I want to tell you something, it's kind of exciting to go and, and just see how hard people are working for the community. Most people don't realize all the time and effort that goes in. You know, the Tourism Bureau does the Joy of Christmas and the Wine Fest, and I'm dying up here not to say we've got some new project, but Mike Clark is kind of helping us and his committee working on something new. But it's always about doing something positive and good for the community. So it's great for you guys to come tonight, and we can all, you know, get a chance to recognize your work as well, so thank you. And I would also like to say, Alexis, are you on the, are you in the entrepreneurship class? If any of you get a chance to come, is that November nineteenth, November nineteenth, to see their presentation, I highly recommend people come and watch those young people put on this presentation, it's very, very impressive. And we are very fortunate to have that group work with us, and those three major projects downtown that they, you know, their predecessors, people before them have set a very high bar for you to, you know, that you've got to meet now. So I think it'll be great to be a chance, have an opportunity, have a chance to see this new group of entrepreneurs make their presentation. So thank you, Alexis.
So that anybody who does want to come, I'm going to just preface this just a little bit, you think you're going to a high school class, believe me, these are like seniors in college. The professionalism they have when they're presenting these things, and bring your questions, because they can answer them. It's really a good class. You'd enjoy it.
Very good. You sure there's no other comments anyone wants to make?
I think it was, from my neighborhood at least, it was a great trick-or-treat time, and just wanted to give a shout out to the police officers, it's great to see them patrolling, and I caught them engaging with some of the kids that were dressed as police officers and getting pictures and putting the lights on, so. Always very appreciative and glad to see, you know, their engagement with the community.
Thank you, Amanda, great comment. Sometimes we take the police for granted. That's absolutely true. Any other comments? Well, I had to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.